Welcome to this edition of What's Going On? Well, there's a lot of things that are going on right now in the city of Dayton that are being affected by what is happening both on the federal and the state level. And that's our major focus of this program is to take a look at what is happening because of what's going on and the influences at the federal and the state level. How's that affecting the citizens of Dayton and the rest of the Miami Valley? This evening, we were to have two guests. Our first guest is Dr. Cassandra Goodwin. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Goodwine.
Goodwine, yes. Dr. Cassandra Goodwine, who is the chair of the Dayton Board of Education. We were also supposed to have Dr. David Lawrence, the superintendent, but as you know, superintendents get called like doctors at the last moment to deal with issues. So, Dr. Lawrence was not able to make it this evening. I've been having a very interesting conversation with Dr. Goodwine. It's amazing. So, our primary focus then this evening is going to be on the perspective of the chair of the board. And we're going to first start off with the bill that was passed by the Ohio Legislature. Now, this bill has direct impact on both the finances and the tax system of the whole state and DEI, which has an effect on the entire state. But what was so unique about this legislation is that Dayton was singled out. Dayton City Schools and their, the method of financing and providing busing for the students. Dayton was singled out. Now, that was really the strangest thing. And our chair here is going to help us to understand the impact that this has had. But before we do that, give us a little bit about your background, because I think this is very, very important, especially given what's happening in Dayton. Tell us about your background.
Sure. So, I'm Dr. Cassandra Goodwine. I am in my fourth year serving on the Board of Education. Outside of the Board of Education, I'm a practicing attorney. I do run my own small-time firm. And I'm also a township administrator here in Jefferson Township. I have a slew of other interests that are, because I'm an active learner in that piece of it. And I think it was, it's really good because I hold my master's in business. I hold a master's in public administration. I've worked in corporate America. I've worked in local government. I have a communications bachelor's as well. And, you know, I'm also a bus driver. I love to tell people that. I'm a licensed bus driver. I'm a licensed CTE teacher mainly because I learned those things so I can help other people get those jobs and join us in the district. So, yes, that's just in a nutshell, a little bit about me.
Okay, now, I know about the rest of the, for whom do you drive the bus?
Dayton Public Schools, they get me out there.
Really? You drive the buses?
I do, I do. This year, we actually have a good amount of drivers because we've been actively recruiting. But in the prior years, if they needed someone to step in, I would help out because I am licensed and I am in short of the district. And I was trained by our drivers on how to do it. So, they made me a better driver in my regular car.
Well, how often do you get to drive the bus?
Well, we, whenever we had an uncovered route or when my trainer, when I first got my license or my trainer went on vacation, she let me do her route as well because I knew it so well because he taught it to me. But yes, I am always willing to step in and help out because that's what you should do.
Okay, so in other words, you know the district and you know this community, not only in terms of the administrative kind of level, but from grassroots?
Absolutely. The only way you can know about, in my personal opinion, the decisions you're making is to really go down and learn what people do and how that impacts the decisions that you make.
Do the students know who you are that are on that bus?
Not a clue. I'm just a regular driver when I'm on the bus, trying to make sure we get there safely.
Okay, that is, this is very interesting. We did, we, when we, our chat before going on the air, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't bring that up. But that's interesting. We talked a lot about Dayton history and so forth. Okay, let's get down to the nitty-gritty.
Okay.
Tell us about this legislation that the Ohio Legislature passed.
So, you know, they've been busy because they've done several things. The one that's at issue here is the biannual budget. And what happened in that bill, we got put into a part of the bill that doesn't even relate to public transportation. But it was a line in there that specified, because it didn't call us out by Dayton Public Schools or Dayton City Schools. It listed Montgomery County and then it puts you in a specific census amount, which only Montgomery County had at the last time. And it essentially didn't allow for transfers at the downtown RTA hub. Dayton Public Schools has no control over the RTA and how they do their route. So, what that would have done, had that actually gone into law, it would have displaced a bunch of students from their route because what stood to happen is we could be financially penalized for giving bus passes to students if the route that they took still allowed them to transfer. Again, we had no control over that whatsoever.
Okay, so let's make sure we clarify here. As part of the transportation services of the Dayton City Schools, the students receive bus passes that are paid for by the Dayton Board of Education for transportation?
Correct, and these are high school students.
These are high school students, right. So, if the students, if the students don't get to school, that affects the attendance, which obviously affects the attendance records, which could affect the finances and reimbursements.
It does, and it affects their, the outcome of where their life is going because education is the starting block to where you're going in that piece.
In other words, their educational and social development.
Correct. And we saw that too in the first couple of weeks because we didn't offer bus passes this year. And we saw a dip in attendance.
Okay, so then how were students getting to school?
Parents, guardians, carpool, some walk, some rode the bus. And several just didn't come altogether in that piece of it. And that's kind of why we offer, because, and you know, and you may not know, in Ohio, you don't have to offer, it's not required for education institutions to offer transportation.
No, I did not know that.
It's optional. Correct. So, and if we didn't offer it, then we would see greater numbers of students not come because again, getting there, that any barrier to getting to school, that is something that really can push someone away from going, especially when you get to these teenage years here. And it's a lot harder when you're dealing with teenagers who kind of have a freedom of choice where they want to go in that piece versus a elementary or middle school child. That's still young enough where I don't have too many places I can get into if I'm 12. 14, 15, 16, and 17, there are a lot of things that are competing for your interest at this point in life. So, yes, it is not required for us to provide transportation or any public institution at that piece. But we offer it because we see the value of if we can get you here, then we can help you get to the next point.
Okay, so then what happened was the board and you're an attorney. And I guess you couldn't, I couldn't think of a better person to have as chairman of the board than an attorney. What action did the school board take?
We went, we went through to the judicial branch of it at this piece because at this point, we filed a temporary restraining order, which this, that first step was to put a hold on the law itself coming into fruition. As it was passed, as of September 30th, as it stood, it would have went into effect. So, our temporary restraining order was granted. And then that took us to a preliminary injunction, which was a hearing of our merits on the case and the state of Ohio's merits on the case. I actually got to attend that hearing, which was an interesting time to really hear kind of where their interest was coming from because it still doesn't make sense of why you would put this in a, in a budget bill in the interest, like they stated, safety is what we're going for. You know, we want to make sure the kids are safe. But how do you make them safe? By displacing them. That doesn't make sense in that piece. So, that hearing went down and we were actually victorious on that piece of it. So, that placed a temporary halt on the implementation of that portion of the law. We are not out the woods yet. We have the actual full case still that has going to happen in 2026 of where we're trying to pretty much overturn this law.
Okay, let me ask you this. Why was Dayton singled out?
I'm going to say, based on the testimony and things I heard, there was a lot of political pressure when it came to what was the interest here. So, for our businesses downtown, in which I've also heard the frustration of kids being in this area and it's being, it's giving a negative impact to those who work downtown and those who live downtown. That's one area of it. There were several things people kept stating that there are no alternatives, like DPS won't do anything. We don't have anything else we can do because again, as we'll talk about here, funding dictates what you can do. You can't just make a yellow bus come out of thin air and then drivers come and then be able to transport not only our kids, which another fun fact, if we provided anything to our children, then we have to give it to the surrounding charter and parochial schools as well. And they will take advantage of it because transportation is expensive in that piece. So, the political pressure of not only one of our city leaders, but our state leaders, I believe, is what ultimately pushed to make this come to fruition because again, initially, the first way it was written, it affected all of the inner-city schools. So, Cleveland, Cincinnati, Columbus, all, all of the nine urban schools. When the final bill came out, it was just Dayton that was left in there.
Okay, so I think this is, this is an important point to clarify. And that is the Dayton City Schools, the same as I guess any other urban school in Ohio, is responsible for providing transportation for charter schools?
Correct.
Parochial schools? And they receive no reimbursement for these?
We receive about 60% of reimbursement of what it costs to transport a person. So, we end up still paying more out of pocket for it.
40%? If that, if I'm doing the math correctly?
Yes.
You've got, the Dayton City Schools, like so many other districts, have to pick up 40% of the cost on that transportation?
That's correct.
Okay. There has, there have been a number of comments about unacceptable behavior of students on the public buses. And for whatever reason, there are those who said that was the, the whole incentive behind this, this happening. But it's not happening, they're not doing that in Cleveland or Columbus and Cincinnati. It, I'm still in my mind trying to feel, why Dayton? I get, I get a, why Dayton?
Baby, I will say, like, we don't have a history as an institution of fighting back.
Okay.
So, honestly, it was, you know, maybe they'll just let it happen and we'll just move on to the next thing because that's just not a traditional stand.
They didn't expect the pushback?
Correct. And like even to the comment about behavior, like the generation as a whole throughout, not only Ohio, there are, there are a lot of new norms that we aren't used to.
Yeah.
Those pieces of it, because I won't isolate it to just the RTA buses. We have, we have some of the same complaints about our K through 12 yellow buses in that piece of it. We have a little bit more strength because these are younger kids and it's easier, or they're more receptive to, hey, you can't do that, or no, or if I call your parents.
Because you could lose your privilege.
Correct. You can lose this. Right, we have that piece of it here. And that next step of here, when it comes to dealing with another entity, we cannot be everywhere all the time. But our code of conduct does extend to everything outside of here. So, when we do hear those type of things, we do absolutely revoke those type of, we don't give them additional, additional RTA passes. You can't lose those privileges. But that's just one step in a whole system of like, when they're in the community, we need community help in this piece of it. Because again, our staff cannot be everywhere all the time.
And that's where the parents could come in and community leaders. You know, like I'm thinking, like, there are a lot of senior citizens, especially, or people that are retired, or people that as part of their community volunteer work, would be willing to ride the buses and chaperone.
And we would love it. Like, there's some great, I think there's a group, not a thing, there's a group called the Street Soldiers who I see out at festivals. Great group to be in, work with. There's a fatherhood initiative that has a group of volunteers. I think what we have to help people know is to be a partnership, it can't always be that we have to pay people for these things because we don't have unlimited resources. But we do need individuals who care about the kids and their development to be a real partner with us and help when they're outside of our care.
Right.
Because that, that's a big piece of it. From the time you come to school, get on the bus and that, and then go home, that's a lot of time that if you can be in the area, do it. Me personally, I went down to the, about a month ago, I spent several days down at the, at the RTA hub because I wanted to watch the process. And I saw some places that we could have been better as a district. And we've made some of those changes where we increased the type of staff that we have now here. At one point, we had our principals to help identify, help correct behavior in that piece. We have our SRO team out there now too. We're utilizing our life coaches in the future. It's just several different things that we're trying to do to adjust to help within our means. But we still need help.
And I think, I think the community, the community part with that is so important. Let's get to the finances and what's happening with the finances and the tax structure. Dr. Lawrence has, has been very voiceful to the community in terms of a corrective that could be put in place as a result of some of the legislation which came out of this, which affects all of Ohio, which said that the districts can no longer put emergency levies or what have you on the ballot? Okay, tell us, first of all, tell us about that.
So, there are, that's a part of a bundle of different ways that you actually can fund the district where you have, people don't know, the local levies are kind of a good portion of money that comes that helps supplement the state part. The emergency amount is amount that comes in because you can't raise, there's, there was a bill, I believe in the 90s, where even though a property value goes up, your tax value does not go up. You are locked in at the rate at which it, the levy was passed at that time. So, our last levy was in 2008. That is the locked-in rate of all the properties that were available in 2008.
Despite the escalation in value?
Correct, correct. So, the different type of levies that you can have, so you have your, you can do a renewal, which means I'm still trying to lock this in and get something new. You can do a new levy, meaning I'm trying to capture a new piece of it. You can do the emergency levy, which is that piece of, we need this period of, we need this funded this period. That's no longer available because, you know, the legislator came back and they overturned the governor's veto. And that was one of the line item vetoes. So, that's completely gone.
So, let's get that straight. Now, the governor, Goodwine, did veto that?
He did.
And the legislature went back and passed over the veto?
That's correct. So, that, no, that is no longer a source that could come into fruition for us at all. It's like it never happened. It was never there. It's gone. So, that, that, yeah, that's, I mean, but it's that piece of, when it comes to the funding pieces that people don't really understand, again, is that locked-in piece, that the dollar doesn't go up for the school district. But the dollar amount that it costs to educate a child does go up.
Yeah. So, and if I understand some of the things that I, reading, that what Dr. Lawrence, and I don't, I'm not pretending that you could speak for Dr. Lawrence, but what Dr. Lawrence seemed to be saying to the community that one of the solutions to this is a reassessment of the property values, which will raise the assessed values, which would raise the amount of, of income. Correct? Could you please?
Yeah, but the only way for you to actually do that under, because that's a great idea, right? But under the current structure, because again, we have individuals who are attacking the property tax altogether in that piece of it, where you would have to overturn that piece of legislation that allows us to do this assessment. Because the only way for us to do that today is a new levy, to get that new value assessed under the current structure.
In other words, you'd have to pass the levy, and after the levy's passed, then the reassessment takes place? Is that what you're saying?
That we would get the reassessed value. So, you know, we do the triennial that just happened last year on the property taxes, where some of us went up and some of us was like, oh, this is so much. To get that, that new piece of it, we would have to pass another levy at this point. But that does change you because again, you would, we could have done a replacement levy, which we could have gotten rid of a levy going, if you pass this, then that one, that one, that way, that way, we're not stacking on top of each other here. However, that, I mean, there's some things that come with that because there, when you think about the homestead tax that goes in there, if you do a new levy, you lose that.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so it's, there's, there's no clean way out here to satisfy the competing interest here because, you know, the people, the property owner is the one that is feeling the biggest stress here. Hence how we have this, this rhetoric out of eliminate property taxes. Well, if we did that, then we would eliminate a ton of services that we don't have any recourse for. And if we rely solely on the state legislator, we're still waiting for them to do fair funding.
Yeah, let's talk about the fair funding. What, let's talk about that. That's another dynamic. When I was doing my homework for this program, tell us about the fair funding.
Well, it's not fair. So, let's start with that one. It's misleading in the title and that piece. So, fair funding is a formula of how you get the amount per pupil that's assessed, that's given to you in that piece of it.
Right.
97, I believe it was, it was ruled unconstitutional, the way the state does it. Since then, the state still, they made a couple of changes, but it's still not in assessed in a way that gives you actually what you need. It gives you a piece of it, kind of like the busing we talked about, the most simplest way to understand it. We give you a fraction of what's necessary of that piece based on, so it takes in kind of the salaries, the non-salary items, kind of just about every little factor that we're putting in of what we think it'll cost a child. So, then you multiply that by the number of kids and then that's supposed to give you the number that you need. If you actually do that, you will see that that number is significantly different than the actual number that we get. And then even in the fair funding bill right now, I believe next year is the last year that has actually already been passed through the legislator for us to actually still receive in that piece. And then we need to go through this whole process again to go, okay, look, you gave us something. It's not enough, but we still need something to keep going. And we know we're out of this one, of this piece of the time period of it. We still need to move forward in that piece.
And especially with the charter schools, because what happens with, when they, when they figure that funding, they don't include the charter schools.
That's a direct, because they get, now they get, they used to take it from us. So, now it goes directly to the charter schools, which is now public dollars that are diverted from our budget and sent to the other one.
But then what happens is this, that a lot of people don't realize, the charter schools retain the authority to remove the students from the charter schools. And if they go back to the public schools, it's too late for the public schools. The money's already there.
There's a thing we call it's Count Day. And it's about, it's actually this month, it's October, and where you get the full count of the kids for the year, the kind of base what your funding is going to be on in that piece. So, after this point, any movement, because like you just stated, because charter schools don't have the same requirements that they have, they, they can be a lot more loose with their requirements of going, you know what, you snapped a pencil, you don't go here anymore.
Right.
That's the thing, we're upset with you. You're no longer here.
They have more of an authority, an option of removal.
That's correct.
Or transfer, let's say, transfer back to the public schools.
That's correct.
And then the public schools are responsible for the education of that child, but the charter school retains?
The funding.
The funding.
That's correct. You got it.
You know, that's, you know, that's, yeah, I, I, that's something I, and don't get me wrong, I have nothing against charter schools.
Me either, because they serve a purpose. Like, they, they're educating kids in this community.
But what we're talking about here is, is the funding. Okay, that, that's what we're talking about. Given what's happening out of Washington, how's that affecting the Dayton budget?
This year, this year, so we did take several losses and some federal grants based on that piece of it. Fortunately, there were several things that were already drawn down. So, this year, we're going to be, like, people won't see a big disruption because we've been fiscally responsible coming out of the COVID funds and how we move forward. Next year's a different story because how are, if I could just split it up for people, you have your local property taxes, that's a portion of it. We get some tax funds from the state. And then most of our federal programs are kind of, that's our next bucket here. So, that's our special ed, that's our title programs. There are a lot of resources that go to people who really need these services in that piece of it. When that third bucket starts to crumble, as we see.
And that's what's happening. It's that third bucket.
That third bucket is.
It's that third bucket.
It's real, it's a hole in the bottom. It's just, it's, it's not happening at that piece of it. And that's going to be, we're going to see a major hit in our next fiscal year of that piece. And I believe we're going to see that repeatedly because if something doesn't change at the federal level, meaning people are now voting in a way that makes sense for public education, because right now, you know, they don't even want the Department of Education.
Yeah, and that's what I was about ready to say. Let's talk about that bucket. Let's talk about that third bucket. Because we talked about that at the beginning. Now, what is happening is the layoffs and so forth that they're doing in the Department of Education. And a lot of the, the dispensing of the funds and the programs and the monitoring of those come out of the Department of Education. And one of the, the divisions there is in special education. And it was my understanding that that was one of the divisions or offices within the Department of Education that really got hit.
They pretty much gutted that section. I'm being honest with you.
All right, let's go.
Yeah, they, and that.
Go ahead, preach the truth.
Look, that is it right here.
Go preach the truth, go ahead.
Everything that they said that they were going to do, they are doing. And they've laid off, they laid off, I believe, about 90% of the staff at this point, just in the Department of Education as a whole. The special department, special education unit itself is non-existent. I believe, I mean, I believe it's going to, like, we're going to see these impacts because that is the compliance office right there. That there's always a check and balance when it comes to what we're doing and who's looking at what we're doing in that piece. And funding is tied to that piece of it. And you can't.
Accountability.
Right, you can't operate successfully without both pieces being intact in that piece. So, yes, we're going to continue to do the parts that we need to do on our end, but at a certain point, the fund is, the funds will dry up. And the individuals who work in these spaces, I mean, these are real human being individuals. Their salaries are tied to these pieces. Our general fund can only take so much stress until eventually we have to decide what's the priority here? What can we operate on in that piece of it?
Right.
I am fortunate that it won't be this year that that's the decision. But if things don't loosen up and they don't get back in balance at the state and federal level, we're looking at some real hard times.
You're looking forward.
Correct.
You're looking forward to what that thing happens.
There's some things that are going to happen. That's unfortunate.
And another thing that I, that this really, I, when we were talking before going on the air and the shutdown and everything's happening, we don't know how long all this is going to go, like SNAP, the food subsidies and that sort of thing. And we do have a sizable population in the Dayton community that depends on, it's the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program that depend on these funds for maintaining a good diet and subsistence. And you told, explained something to me that as, as those funds get affected, that affects the student population in the Dayton City Schools?
It does, I mean.
Except, go ahead, unwrap that, unpack that for us.
Yeah, so, and I will say, as, one of my predictions is that we'll actually see an increase in our attendance because at least at school, you're going to be guaranteed two meals a day in that piece. Because at least at school, you're going to be guaranteed two meals a day in that piece. That third meal though, that, that's a different bucket here if, if you're going hours. Because it's a long time from the end of school till you come back in that piece. So if these families, we have, I mean, we have a couple shelters and we have the food pantry in these places. But we're going to see this impact. So November first is the first day, we're, we're about a week away here, where they're going to miss that first payment. That's dinner missed for a week for, that's going to happen for multiple individuals. For us, I know our team has always been able to try to do as much as we can. Like this will pull some additional resources because we'll possibly start looking at, well, let's give them a snack at the end of the day because we know that some individuals' dinner is a little suspect at this point because we don't know if they're having it. And then most people come and they give you that information, like I didn't eat all day.
Yeah, and I was, I wanted to get that. I don't mean to interrupt you. But before all this, before all this happened, there was concern that a sizable number of students in the Dayton City Schools before all this was happening weren't guaranteed dinner when they go home.
Correct. And that's correct. So, and you have to know, our population, which another thing, to tie it back to state funding here, the poorest districts tend to get more funding for the state because they need more.
Right.
We're a poor district.
Right. Well, that's only right. That's right. That's what it should be.
And that piece of it right there, you have to think, we have a large group home population. Montgomery County as a whole is the largest in the state of Ohio of group homes. And in the Dayton, Harrison Township area, we're the largest.
Right.
We have that. We also have, we have a big foster care population. We have a big population of caregivers that are grandparents, that are retired, are no longer active in the workforce. So when you put all these factors together, we know that there are individuals who depend on government assistance for them to be able to provide meals.
Exactly. Namely, that SNAP program.
Yes, that's correct. And we see that even in the summertime when we offer the lunch. Because we know you can't handle three meals because you're not used to that piece, and especially if you have a large family. If you have more than one child, this is going to be devastating in that piece. Because again, not only do you have to feed your children, how are you going to go as well? And you, we're going to see families having to make that type of decision of who eats at a certain point, depending how long this goes. And then even when it comes back up, there's no guarantee that it's gonna, the day that the government opens back up, we're going to process those processes. We're looking at at least thirty days here. And that's a long time for someone to go without giving groceries.
Go back and post-feed someone that didn't get food.
That's correct.
You can't go back and, again, that bucket, another bucket with a hole in it. And I like, I, I, I like that analogy. Let's go to DEI.
Okay.
Now, as the chairman, as both an attorney and chairman of the board, what kind of responses have you had to make given the change in the federal guidelines for DEI?
Internally, we get a lot of support from people within the Dayton area because like, most of the programs we do are tailored to the population that we serve, right? We have a very diverse group. We have a, we're immigrant family, immigrant friendly. We have a large student of color population. We also have, which most people don't, we have a very large special education division too. So we, like autism has, has ticked upward over the last ten years. And just the different programs that we're able to offer these populations have been received really well. Outside of here, we get a lot of criticism from individuals who don't believe that our kids should have a chance or anything additional to help them in that piece of it. And these aren't even additional programs. These are programs that are helped, are meant to help you be able to assimilate or work within these populations.
So it's not necessarily even DEI related. It's special needs, it's meeting the needs of, of a population.
Correct.
It ties all in with the special education or what have you.
Correct.
Ideology.
Correct. And, and that piece, that's just some miseducation by individuals. Like sometimes people who transition need help transitioning. People who have reading delays need help with these programs and they need places to keep them on par. The, the, I mean, it's just a crazy concept that individuals go, no more DEI. And you go, do you even know what that means? Like, tell me what you're trying to say. Like, what do you?
In other words, that can be very contextual. It depends on the community.
It does. It does. And I mean, I think it's, it's unfortunate that there is a community out there that believes that people of color or minorities in general only can compete if we can say that you have this one advantage. There are many advantages that we don't have in this piece. And if you're saying a sense of community is an advantage for us, or a sense of group that understands that we need some extra help to be able to catch up, I mean, that's just a crazy concept.
Well, not only that, but when we talk about DEI, we're talking about women, we're talking about, I mean, how many women, because opportunities were not, were not given, they were made available. And they were given the opportunity to compete, such as yourself.
Correct.
DEI just gave them, people the opportunity to compete, to get into the, into the ballpark to play.
Yes, and you still had to do all the rest of the work.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and, and, and it was done and it was done quite well. I want to go to another issue. And I'm glad I, I, we, we had this, this, this pre-conference before going on the air. And I'm, I'm glad because I wanted to bring this next topic up. I had read about it. I didn't understand it. Okay, and I said, I'm glad. So she went through so that I wouldn't look stupid on the air.
That's help. You gotta help people out later.
Okay. Let's talk about this whole issue that was in the paper about the vote of no confidence. Now, there were a lot of rumors and I, and at first I was asking her, well, you know, it, it was one time or one vote or two votes, I had heard. The rumor mill was that there were two votes of no confidence. And she looked at me and says, I only heard about one. I said, okay, well, that's the first misinformation. And I said, the second thing I, I couldn't understand is that everyone got paid. That nobody went without a paycheck. She explained the whole context. And if she was able to explain it to me and it was understandable, I'm sure she can explain it.
Not a problem. And, and I will say, like, I will say first, I've never actually received anything formal from our union about a vote of no confidence. I read it in the paper. A couple of teachers sent it to me. But the actual formal channels of what I believe is supposed to happen has never happened. And despite that, I am still confident in our teaching staff and what they do each and every day. So where, from what I read, because again, never had this conversation.
So you read about your own.
That's correct. What I read. Correct. What I read. That's correct. So in October of twenty twenty-four, we, we changed our policy. In our workforce for about, about the past six, six or seven years, we have this thing called prepayment, meaning you get paid before you actually complete the work. So if you started on a Thursday and the pay period was Friday, everyone else got paid, you got paid the prior two weeks too, right? The concept.
Even though you didn't work.
Even though you didn't work. Even though. And this is only for contractional employees. So this doesn't go for hourly employees.
All right, let me make sure I make, make this clear. In other words, my, my employment history, I showed up to work. I worked, I got paid.
Correct.
The system that was in place in, in, in the district was you got paid and then you showed up for work or should have shown up for work.
Correct. Correct. And this, and this only came out of our last administration. So this has not been a thirty-year practice for the district.
Okay.
This was different administrations do different things. Of which we as a Board of Education, because this issue came prior to me being on the Board of Education. And it was our goal this time that this should not be passed to one to the next Board of Education.
Okay.
And we need to correct it. Our consultants have told us this. And this is what we're going to do. So we passed the policy in October twenty twenty-four. Every policy meeting, there is a seat for the DEA president or representative.
Right.
It is their choice to come or not come. Outside of that, there is a weak period of where the policy is out that anyone can put a comment to it. We received no comments. The vote was passed seven zero by the Board of Education. And initially, we were going to put this in play in January because it was going to hit, thinking about the tax purpose and the way payments fail. In January, August, you get, there are three pay periods. So if you only, if you had to miss a pay period or skip a pay period, as we called it, there were still two pay periods, like the other months. We pushed it to August because it seemed too disruptive in January at this point. So we have, like, okay, we'll do this in August. To our knowledge, meaning us, the Board of Education and what has been communicated to us, the superintendent, treasurer, business manager and our other leaders met with the union heads every month up and to that period. And this item was on their agenda and it was something they discussed. Myself and the vice president, we went to the August meeting because this is going to be implemented. We just talked about this. We want to make sure that it's going all right. And at that meeting, there was, there was mixed, like the DEA union president was, of course, was upset at this piece. But other union leaders had stated like, yeah, we had heard about this, but we didn't know what was happening in that period of it. So from that period, we came up with, I'm like, me and the vice president, we asked our, asked if it was possible, could we offer extra work for individuals to do? We know they have annual trainings, like any company, they may want to set stuff up. Is there something we can put in play that they could do remotely? Because some people may not be back yet too. That way, if they did these things, we will be able to at least pay them for a week of work, right?
In other words, we're talking accountability here.
Correct.
Accountability of public funds, of the citizens' money.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
You're talking about complete and total.
Yes.
Accountability. And even though you made modifications, you were able to say, though we did demand some indication of earned labor for what we're doing.
Yes, and that's correct. And I, I do want to, because I missed this part. What people need to know too, is the issue for us came when people quit their job, right? And this is again, only contractional workers.
Yeah, explain this. Yeah, explain this.
Because that's, that's the big piece. So if you, again, first example, you started in the middle of the pay period and you got paid the whole thing. And then you decide, I got a better job or this isn't for me. And then you quit. You put in a two-week notice. The first problem is.
You've already been paid.
We're already paid. Right. So it's unlikely that people was finished out a two-week notice to work off what they've already been paid.
Right.
So now you owe us money.
Right.
And we have to, and we have to, and we did go after individuals to recoup the funds.
That's accountability of public funds.
And that's an uncomfortable thing to tell someone, like, I get that you're quitting. You owe us money. So we're going to have to take this one way or another because it's public funds. And that, I mean, that's a, like, the system in theory worked if people completed their contracts. But there aren't real consequences if you don't complete your contract. So that piece of it right there, so we fast forward. We, we were able, as a board, we agreed to offer extra work, which that cost us about two million dollars to make sure that you, people who wanted, they were able to do that. And then on top of that, we found out during our board meeting that their benefits would be, um,
Right.
That they, they didn't want to, they still were going to take that amount. As a board, we agreed and voted on that we would cover the cost of the payment for the benefit on that piece. So at no period was the benefits, we did correct that because we didn't know that going into it.
Right.
We offered extra work, but we, people had not worked yet. And like, again, eighty percent of the rest of the district, they go to work and then they get paid. So right now, there's only two, two units right there. I mean, it's a small fraction of individuals who still are on the prepaid system. Because yes, an injunction was filed. By the time the injunction would have came, um, the temporary restraining order, the date would have passed. So it didn't make sense for us to fight it.
It was also an alignment, a re-alignment. It was a realignment with the rest of the process in the district.
That's correct. And if we talk about equity here, how fair is it that there's a population of individuals who get paid before they work? I mean, you got.
And also, it seems like there was some miscommunications that, that somehow involved in the union. Because you said the union president was not at the meeting, meeting when it was discussed and it was published. You said it was published for a whole week before you voted.
That's correct.
So there must have been a communications gap.
And I can't account for those type of things.
That's right. That's my point. There was a communications.
This is our normal process that has been in effect for quite a period of time, but there was nothing to put on that.
Was anybody, was anyone upset with the union because of the lack of communications?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I can't speak to that piece because I don't, I'm not on that side of it. But I know people need someone to blame. And when you sit at the head of the organization, you're the person that they have to blame. It comes with the job you have here. Again, everything that me, as well as the rest of the Board of Education did to ensure we did the best for individuals. Because we agree that communication is huge. And some, somewhere in this piece of it, even though this process went out in October of twenty twenty-four, and we pushed it back from January of twenty twenty-five to August of twenty twenty-five, there still seem to be, so.
And compensated.
And compensated. And took off more for ourselves to ensure people were okay, would have been okay. It, yeah, it just happened. But I'll tell you again, I have never received anything formal from the union as a body, as their exec board. I saw the same email that other people saw because people sent it to me and he gave it to me.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I'm like, oh, okay. Well, all right. Well, if they want to talk, I've always been an open door policy. The union president has my phone number. I call him anytime I have a question, especially when it's something that impacts the union. I'm still going to call him because that is what we have to do. We serve people. You can't sit here and be upset about individuals who try to tarnish your credibility.
I want to move on and thank you for clarifying that. And I think, and especially, I was able to understand that. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that you receive the same benefit. And I want to go on to something different. On the monitor, what has happened on the monitor? And I want to tell, yeah, ready to bring up on the monitor, some wonderful, what I feel is wonderful news that is coming out of the Dayton City Schools. When I was on Good, it, it is, it has just come up. When I was still on faculty at Sinclair and I was invited to a, an event, a recognition at the Dayton City Schools, I saw some wonderful things that, that were, were being showcased. The students that were coming out of the Dayton City Schools that had traveled all over the country because of their achievements and participated in national competitions and even to Europe. Like, I had a student, I had, I had a student who was a graduate of Stivers and was a violinist and had played with the, the student orchestra in Rome. Now, he was still in high school. Now, when I graduated from college, I hadn't been no, any further than four hundred miles from, from home. I hadn't been anymore. This was one of my students that had been to Rome with the high school and, and at this event that I'm talking about. At this event, there were students that traveled all over the country, even Europe. And I had a question. I, I, I just didn't understand. I said, there's something missing here. And I said, where is the media? Where's the media? I mean, all these wonderful contributions coming out of the Dayton City Schools. I mean, this should be on the afternoon, the morning news, the afternoon news, the evening news. And I was so surprised about that. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about here, go ahead and put the visuals back up. Okay, these are gains in the proficiency access across all grades and levels, across all grade. Fourth grade mathematics, up five point eighteen percent. Sixth grade English, language arts, up three point four one percent. Sixth grade mathematics up, and I taught math, developmental mathematics, up four point two nine. Seventh grade mathematics, up thirteen point thirteen percent. Look at these numbers. Eighth grade science, up six point six four. American history, up two point nine oh. American US government, five point eight two. Biology, six point seventeen. Geometry, and I taught geometry also, six point seventeen. Geometry, and I taught geometry also, six point seventeen. English, English Language Arts, too, six point four six. District overall, up one point five oh. Tell us about some of the wonderful things that have come out that have documented the wonderful progress that is being made in the Dayton City Schools.
I don't want you to think that you can't still teach math, because we'll take you, you can come on over.
Oh, we'll come on.
You can come on over, after this is over, we get you right in there.
No, 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 I'm too old.
No, no such, no such thing. We get you right in there. We've done some really great things this year, like, even the things that you noted right there, as a district, our career tech program is rated a four point five out of five stars, which is very high, very proud of that one. As a district as a whole, we rose an entire star level here, and that's amazing, especially in the second year of a new superintendent. I would like to say, I am also a debate coach for the district.
Oh, okay. I can see that.
I'm a debate coach, yes, for the, this year, I was at Charity Adams, but they, they've gone, my girls have gone to another school now, but even that piece, like, you talk about the American government pieces, debate last year was the first time that we had it from seventh through twelfth grade at all of our middle and high schools, and to watch that progress of research, public speaking, being able to talk, you just see how all these additional extracurriculars have played into the academic piece of it. What's not on that chart as well is even in our athletic area, we changed our requirements two years ago of our GPA where we put it to where the state level was, but we've seen now, because we also added tutoring services in, we've seen about ninety percent of athletes stay academically eligible throughout the year.
Oh, wow.
That's amazing.
That is really amazing.
That's amazing, like, the amount of effort that's been put in the classroom and in extracurriculars, academic and athletic, it's a hundred percent turnover at this piece of, you're just seeing people being able to utilize these skill sets. Some things you also don't see on there too, even with our career tech, so I run the district spirit shop, right, you know?
Boy, what is it?
Mini hats.
How many hats?
Mini hats.
Wearing you.
But we, we've been able to employ students in the district in student, design jobs, like, even the same way someone is filming this right now, all of our games at Welcome Stadium, those are all filmed by students. The way they run that piece, and we have found ways, the merchandising and the spirit shop, it's all put together by students.
And I wanted to say something, we have, we've had, since, I've, I've got a long history with, with DATV, Dayton City students here at, volunteering and learning here at DATV.
And that's the piece right there, like, you're getting people to get beyond the classroom and see how the practical, or how the theoretical goes into the practical. And I mean, we, you're seeing more and more, and I bet too, if you looked at the geometry scores at opponents, and you compared it to the kids in the construction class, I guarantee they're doing well in it because that's the actual space you get to use geometry.
Right.
When you gotta measure how to put a floor in.
Right.
Or what amount of drywall I need to put this together. But we just have a ton of things going on where you don't hear about them, because as I tell you about, they're, they're not sexy stories. But the reality is, we have a lot of kids achieving and doing really well, like, I'll tell you just a quick dive here, my own nephew, who I took in his sophomore year, he came to me as a high school dropout. I got him into the College Career Readiness Program, and he went from not wanting to be at school, because he came from Texas, to, he graduated as a valedictorian of third good, he graduated with associate's degree. He was in just about every sport you can have, he wasn't a great athlete, but he learned how to be on a team. And we're seeing that more and more, with, I believe this year, we're gonna see even more students come out with associate's degrees, because we are, have them on pathways to make these kinda transitions happen.
And I wanna make a clarification on which, I don't mean to interrupt, but this is such good stuff, that there are students graduating from Sinclair and high school at the same time, and that includes a number of, out of the Dayton City Schools.
That's correct.
They get their high school diploma and their associate's degree at the same time. They, well, they go to two different graduations. They go to two graduations.
Yes, my, my student, he did his, he graduated from Sinclair, and then the next week, he graduated from third good Marshall. But those are great opportunities that people are learning about, and we are being able to expand, like, our Forward NGL partnership right now, which is a program that is designed to make sure kids leave here with a plan, whether it's college, trade, military, small business, any of those type of things, like, we're seeing that, that's starting as young as fourth grade now, so we can help people know, whatever comes up, if you wanna be a welder, we're gonna make that happen for you. If you have no idea what you're gonna do, we're gonna make that happen for you, but our team has been really good at putting these type of things in place, that you're seeing the fruits very early stage. Next year, I imagine you're gonna see those numbers continue to increase because we are trending upward.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you very much for being here, you, this has just been fantastic talking to you.
It's great talking to another person, and not just on Facebook.
Yeah, well, what she was saying is so much of response is, has to be in writing. So now she has it, she, she has it recorded, that she could refer to people to, to see. Thank you very much, and I wanna thank the viewing audience, thank you for watching. And again, next month, we'll be back to talk to you about what's going on here in Dayton.